Uh, Councilmember Wong is is out of state, so he will not be joining us tonight. So with that, uh, look for item number four, which is the adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Garad to adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries moves into visitor presentation. We have a couple, uh, folks here tonight joining us. And so tonight, uh, first one I have up is is, uh, Superintendent, uh, Aaron Radke of Eastern Carver County School. And it's, uh, regarding learning and listening presentations. So good evening. Welcome. I haven't, I don't think I've ran into you, so congratulations on your.
Thank you.
I, I don't think I've seen you since that, so.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, that's one of them things.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. I am glad to be here. My name is Dr. Erin Rathke, and I am excited to be the new superintendent in Eastern Carver County. And I am supposed to say next slide, sorry. And she said there'll be a delay. Okay. Um, I'm excited to be the new superintendent in Eastern Carver County. My previous role in the district was assistant superintendent for the last four years. So I am thrilled to have the opportunity to build on the work that we've already started, um, over the last handful of years. I want to just share a little bit about myself. Um, previous to being the assistant superintendent, I was a principal, an assistant principal, a school improvement specialist, an instructional coach, and I also was a teacher for over a decade. And so, um, I hope I look too young to believe I was taught for over a decade, but well into, uh, you know, 24 years of teaching and education. And I'm going to say next slide. I really want to just make sure that people in the community see our strategic plan because we worked really hard in the community to build our strategic plan over the last handful of years. And we started that in the pandemic, which was a lot of work, but spent a lot of time just trying to engage with people as much as we could, um, in a pandemic. Um, we engage students and staff and community members, and we've built a strong roadmap and foundation to our strategic plan. And so we're going to remain steadfast in that work and want to really be able to share that because I do believe it's reflective of the voices of our students and our staff in our community. Next slide. And I'm actually just having to move one more slide because I want to make sure I keep within my time. So I am excited to just do some learning and listening. And so because I have been in the district, I just really want to come out strong and say it's important for me to still spend some time doing a lot of listening and engaging. It's just an opportunity to learn from a different lens of the district. And so I am going to be spending a hundred days, which I've already kind of started, um, engaging, um, in learning and listening. So I just want to invite the community and our council to engage in our full community engagement opportunities. So the next slide here, you're going to see some dates. Oh, I'm sorry. It'll say my next, my four questions. Let me cover this first. During my, um, hundred days, I am asking for really critical questions, and I think it's going to be really important, um, on the cusp of what the district is entering into, as many districts are possible cost containment, um, needing to think critically about the size of the district. And so these four questions are going to be really important. And one is just what's really great about our district? I've just really enjoyed hearing what people have to say about what they're proud of. Um, what's on your Eastern Carver County Schools wishlist? And so just want to hear the dreams and hopes of our community members, our students and our families. What should the district prioritize as the budget remains a challenge? And what are three opportunities that we have? And so those four questions just linger for you when you come out and do some full engagement with the, the district. And so then just want on this last slide to just share, we are going to do two large, um, community events to be determined for locations, but those dates and times are secure. And then we also have language support for, um, our Somali families and our Spanish speaking families to ensure that we can get full engagement across our community. There will be a survey as well, so plenty of opportunity to share your thoughts as a city. And that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you for having me.
Very exciting and so nicely laid out. I come from a Carver background, so I love slide decks. This is a beautiful slide deck. Um, it relays it out well. That's so exciting. Congratulations on your role. Um, very exciting to see the different, um, communities be given a space, not only in their own language, but perhaps even a safe space, um, to really be able to engage with the school district. So this is very exciting. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I, it's been a pleasure. I've, I've already had the opportunity to chat with you a little bit, and it's just exciting to see. And I congratulate you on the hundred days. That's exciting to see that kicked off and the community open houses. And like you said, tapping into the community, having it be a safe space for everyone to participate. And I will reflect on those questions. And I would say my one question in regards to that was have, has anybody given you feedback yet? Like what are, what is some of the things on people's wish lists or what they'd like to see?
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you. I have enjoyed engaging with you as well. I know we did the, um, dunk tank together. So, um, really giving it all we got, engaging with the community.
Oozes and all.
Oozes and all. Um, I have, you know, I have had the opportunity in the school year, listening to students, which has been really important. And, um, one of my key priorities as a superintendent is to lift student and to lift student voice. And they are really why we're here and they are at the center of our decision making. And so I've had just a really wonderful time hearing their thoughts. Um, you know, they really have a high value of their teachers. I think our community members are thinking about class size, wanting to, um, maintain and retain high quality educators. That will always come out loud and clear in our community. This is one of the reasons I wanted to be the superintendent in Eastern Carver County Schools is, um, every, lots of people love their teachers, but there's really something special about Eastern Carver County and how our community feels about our educators. And so that's something that I think makes our district really special. Um, so we'll hear a lot about that as well.
Wonderful.
Uh, I won't know if I'll be able to attend those. I'll try, but I do have two kids. I have a fifth grader to be a pioneer. That's a really scary thought, to be honest. And I have a third grader. Um, I think you hit it, you know, just some feedback I have. I think you hit it. I think the teacher experiences that we've, uh, my kids are Carver. Uh, elementary have been wonderful. Um, you know, I think the concerns that hit Carver is your cycling super principals activity there, right? Which is tough to get connected in retirement, kind of a dream opportunity to, I think he's in Jamaica or Caribbean now. Um, you know, I think that, I think the, the, the budget, the question that hits me home at the most about what could you promise or what would you hold during budget? I think class sizes, I mean, it's overheard. I'm sure you heard it. But my son's secondary classes in fifth, in fourth grade has were huge at Carver last year and that. And my, uh, wife, uh, has an educational background and, um, I tend to think I know what I'm talking about, not always. But, um, it's just hard when there's that many kids. And I'm, I'm unfortunately have been so far blessed with kids that my kids tend to pick up things and have been very successful, but I also know that you miss things when there's classes that big. So I think that's the hardest one. Um, in retaining those teachers and, and those sometimes are the hardest things to hear, right? Because, um, it's just easier to like, oh, there goes one teacher. We'll just add classes together. And now you have a class of almost 30 kids and rest, you know, bless them all to be to have 30 second graders, uh, or any, any. So those are the things that jumped out when you've said those questions because it's like, man, the studies, the science, the research, all about classroom sizes is so important. And obviously I know that doesn't come easy because that's, that's one of the most expensive pieces is teachers, uh, well deserved. Um, but it's, it's always looked at quickly when budgets get, get tough is, is, is elimination of teachers, which is not an easy decision by any means, but it's really has repercussions throughout the years. It's not a one-time decision that gets made. It impacts kids forever.
Yeah. Thank you for your feedback.
I just, I just have a thought that I, uh, for me, my kids are all out of school. I got grandkids more to worry about now, but, uh, from my viewpoint, I hope that the schools in the four cities work better together. I don't think that we've had some of that. I think there's been some disconnects at times. Uh, I think there's been some challenging times that I think, um, sitting down and discussing it with the cities, I think could help. We got some really intelligent people at the staff that are, you know, more than willing to come forward and, and help if we can, you know, that doesn't always mean that we can, but I think it's important. And I think, uh, personally, I think it's important for residents to see the superintendent in communities. And I think that we've lacked that a little bit. And I know you've already been part of different things that I probably haven't seen for a while. So I think that that's really important. And I think that that, uh, is beneficial for both sides to really be able to, to, to keep that communication line open as, as strong as in Cali will get it all taken care of with just spot information getting in and getting out. So, um, but I, I, um, that, that would be just something that, that I see as an observation that I, that I really hope we can continue that and keep that moving forward. So that's important. Uh, and then one last question, are, are, where, or is the bus shed going to be built or is that still out there? I, I just haven't heard a word on that for a while. So I was just curious why we have your ear right now?
Sure. Well, we do have some land and it is out in, yep, it is in Carver. And so we're working on assessing that property right now on what the needs will be. But we are working on building our transportation and what that will look like. So.
It's not anything that's really in, we're building it next year yet at this.
No, not here, but we are, it is in the works.
Okay. No, I, I, like I said, I just, I had no, knowing that you bought the land, I just hadn't heard any more, uh, regarding that in a while. And, and just I always forget to ask about it. So that would be a good time to ask. So.
Well, I look forward to our community leader meeting in the fall. We'll put it on the agenda.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much for both of you coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you.
Uh, next, I have Greg, uh, is it Pennant? Did I say that right? Pennant with, uh, Humanity Alliance. Hey there.
Grateful for the opportunity. Um, I have the privilege, honor and privilege of, uh, representing, uh, a wonderful organization called the Humanity Alliance. We started from scratch six years ago, uh, based on an unmet need in the community. And we were inspired by a group of high school students. So that's what got us launched. We leverage as much excess in the community as possible. So we started on food, rescuing ingredients, um, and delivering those meals to people in need. And as we were delivering those meals to people in need, we saw this gap in housing. Also have the privilege as a family of experiencing what it feels like, uh, selling our home and not sure where we're going to move next. So, uh, a very interesting testimony for, uh, maybe another, another meeting, but it's a, it's a good one that hit home and I'm grateful for. So, um, I, Angel said, hey, you better come to the meeting and give us a little update on what's happening with Oak Ridge. So we're stepping into this Oak Ridge opportunity, uh, based on a success we've seen in Victoria. The success we've seen in Victoria's supportive housing, uh, for people focused on getting to that next step. So, um, what I call triage, we don't do triage. So the, um, the addiction, uh, the mental health pieces, we don't have those elements. We focus on the fact after the fact. So an example, maybe somebody like Minnesota Adult Teen Challenge, you finish that program and you're on your way up. That's where Humanity Alliance or Unity Lodge, that's where we really excel. So we've got a, uh, group of individuals that have, uh, surrounded us to get Victoria off, off the ground and running. And now we're looking to leverage those individuals, uh, in the former Oak Ridge site as well. It's a, uh, significant undertaking, so we don't take it lightly. Uh, we're looking at peers and, and other angels that are in the space around us. And we're super, super excited about the opportunity.
I had a chance to watch your video. Sorry, I didn't, not to.
It's great.
Okay, you were done. Um, I had a chance to watch your video today. Um, so I was like, what is this? And wanted to learn a little bit more. And I think if you haven't watched the video, there's a great video on your website, kind of talking more about what you're doing, which really helped me kind of understand it because I wasn't fully familiar. I've certainly driven by your Victoria, um, space and, and thought, oh, I wonder what that is. And, you know, seeing the abundance truck there, things like that. So, you know, you recognize it. Um, but it's just really exciting and it's certainly a big scale. So I was like, wow, five units to, there's how many units, like 300? Okay, okay, that's what it is. Yeah. At Oak Ridge. So, um, that's certainly exciting, but massive, massive scale there. So, um, uh, what partners and things are, are you bringing alongside you to like that scale?
So there's, um, the, I'll give you, maybe I can give you a little bit of overview of what's, what's working.
Yeah.
So we've got, uh, supportive housing, which is affordable, but not free, uh, not subsidized. Uh, so that's important, really important distinction. And then we have a walk to work opportunity. So all of our residents are walking to work, which is reducing the rent burden. It's a huge advantage. Um, not only is that person able to now live in a safe and secure home or, or location, but they're plugged into the community. And when you're plugged into the community is where that magic starts to happen. Um, so they feel part of the community, uh, there's more ownership in the community. Um, and then that, the third part of it is, um, they've got a longer piece, period of time to unpack some of that trauma. So at the lodge, uh, Unity Lodge, we call it 12 to 18 month stay. Our average stay is around nine months. We've had over 34 people through since opening two years ago, uh, and we're full all the time. So the model of a resident being able to walk to work, um, and have that time to unpack the trauma, really, we're focused on what happens after they leave. And that's, uh, I think an emphasis in this space that's long overdue. Um, on average, I get called. I don't have my cell phone with me, so I probably left it. But I get a call on average once a day for people looking for supportive housing and nobody knows Greg from Victoria for the record. So that's, that's what we see. We see that gap of about 300 people that I'm turning away, um, and that need. So our focus in, um, Chaska, and forgive me if I've, if I jump ahead, but our focus in Chaska will be on active seniors. So those are seniors, um, that are active in the community, um, and just literally run on a gas. Um, that fixed income is very, very difficult to deal with, um, and housing features and that. Um, and then parents with children, which we see a lot of, we've got our, our fourth newborn onsite. And, uh, my money is always on the kids. The kids just flourish in that type of environment. So that's where we would start. Um, there are other groups that we would focus on, we'd love to focus on, but those are the two, um, most immediate needs that we would start.
You, are you, so it sounds like, I mean, not that you have a hard time limit, but you said around nine months or something that people typically stay. Are you seeing that with what your vision is for that site or because it's, you're talking about older adults?
Yes.
And children or families with children, is that different?
Active, the active seniors, we would see as a long, longer term, uh, piece. Um, and I would suggest we don't have everything figured out. So, um, but as we walk on that journey, um, there'll be a time where they need more support. And so that's where we'd be looking at partnerships. Um, we love that. We're called the Humanity Alliance because we love the alliance. Um, we're the end in this discussion. We're not the, we're not the ore. So.
So. So, so you have an agreement with the current owners?
We're working with the current owners on how to secure the site, uh, and come to purchase agreement.
With our staff?
Uh, yes, uh, both Matt and Nate have been super, uh, supportive.
And you're thinking of purchasing leasing the whole facility?
Uh, everything on the housing, what I would call the housing, the room and the kitchen side. So it fits very well. We don't have a need or use for anything on the conference site.
They're going to split it?
We'll see.
I just worry that that even makes that facility harder to utilize if eight on one side or the other is, and not the other part. Cause that would require, I mean, obviously some zoning changes, correct?
Yeah. So, um, so currently the Oak Ridge site is zoned as a hotel. And to, uh, have people who are living for longer than that time period, uh, has to be considered an apartment. And, uh, the zoning challenge, uh, that we've been working with Greg on, uh, is that our zoning code, uh, calls for, uh, a kitchen, uh, to be in a unit to be able to be counted as an apartment. Um, and so, um, that's a challenge for Greg's group because, you know, obviously one of his hallmarks of his program is that he has this food program, uh, where they teach cooking skills and they eat communal meals and all these types of things. Um, and so, you know, initially you'd say, well, they don't need, uh, kitchens in each of the units, but it doesn't match with our zoning. So if we are going to, uh, if it was going to be allowed in the Oak Ridge Center, we'd have to rezone it to not require the kitchens be in there. Um, one challenge with this is that we have another facility in the community, um, who, uh, would uh, love for the, us not to require kitchens and, and their units as well and turn them into apartments. And so, uh, we're, we're look, we're trying to look through and see, is there ways that we can look at this? Uh, um, and, and bring back some ideas, but we're sort of in the middle of thinking about that.
Okay. I mean, you, you and I have talked and, and I, I think you have a great program. But you kind of heard what our issue can create, create other issues by doing one versus another, or we open it up and then that's not the direction we want to go. So it's definitely, um, obviously this is visitor presentation, so there is no action to happen tonight. Uh, but, uh, it sounds great and easy, but there are challenges and hurdles that, that we will have to look at and make sure that we can align with that. Um.
But we're actively talking about it. I mean, just to, you know, to look at.
I know the other one scared me a little bit.
Yeah, it does. I think it does.
Very. We've been through a lot there and I hate to open the door. It's just automatically open the door. Uh, like I say, I, I'm not concerned about, um, what you've accomplished. You've already shown that. But it's just sometimes what we do here affects here. And that's, this problem's a bigger problem than over here.
Completely understand.
That's what we have zoning for, so we can follow through. And, you know, I, I just think that, you know, uh, we've, we've kind of seen a similar use for that building already and, and had, you know, we weren't able to, it wasn't able to move forward, let's just say, um, because of significant challenges, uh, with that. So um, I'm glad you're, you know, continuing to work with staff and, and we'll see what happens and, and, um, you know, hopefully we can find something, but I, I'm not sure. I'm.
And Greg has had us out to his, uh, facility in Victoria. And if you do get an opportunity, go out there, it, it's pretty impressive.
I think that's a good, a good invite. And I do, um, I think we've, we've maybe cut our teeth in Victoria so they can tell you how we like to play it. But I, I know why the zoning laws are there. So I like to follow those. We're always balancing, how do we add value to the people that we have the privilege of serving? And so maybe to Matt's point, maybe that full kitchen isn't, isn't right, but maybe some compromise in between, uh, gets us both there and, and we can adhere to that. So we're super excited about, if you had to move in tonight, the only question would be how many towels do you need? I mean, that place is just jumping at the bit to be.
I realized they left everything till I watched your video. I was like, oh my goodness, literally everything is still there.
They left everything there.
It's, you gotta watch the video. It's crazy to me. I had no idea.
Stunning. We'll have work to do, right? There'll be a hustle, but it won't be a heavy lift. Uh, even compared to what we did in Victoria. So we're, we're excited about that.
That would, even if, I mean, just kind of outwardly thinking, that building would have to go be completely re-inspected and okayed the food, you know, the food part would all have to be redone, sitting vacant for two years, wouldn't it?
Well, the, the health department would have to deal with stuff through the state for their food. Um, I don't, I mean, we probably would have our people go through. It's not, it's not a building permit requirement.
Okay. All right. Right. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Eric, what do you have here?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. It is nice. Uh, and I think Matt was right. I think the Victoria site shows best. Uh, the residents really are really doing some amazing work onsite there. And the volunteer, that volunteer base that comes from the community is, uh, equally as, uh, is, is exciting to watch everybody working together. So we're excited.
Residents, are they Carver County? Are they coming from Hennepin?
Mostly, uh, local Carver, some, uh, further west. So they've drifted out. Everybody's kind of getting pushed out, uh, further and further.
You restricted who is eligible?
We're not, we're not, but you, with a waitlist like we have, um, yeah, it's, it's everything we see that we've seen in the last year. I picked up a gentleman less than a mile that was sleeping behind the bank. You know, our, our latest resident. So that's all local.
And, and do you have the ability to take Carver County residents first off the list?
We don't, but I think, um, the relationship that we have with Jen Romero and, and, uh, some of the other support staff, let's see, would see that take, take shape.
That sometime is concerning to me. We've been through a number of these different, uh, type of facilities that say, you know, well, it's, you know, Carver County has this demand and then we find out that it's really not Carver County.
Right.
And it, it's, it's a complete differ, how people look at things and, and, and think of things. Um, not that I'm saying they're not a need, I get it. But sometimes when you open up the facility here, the need comes in from everywhere except for where it's needed.
Yep.
And that's what I, that's what I'm always concerned about is, is then are, are we taking care of the people that we initially started out to take care of? And, and I get it as, as, as it grows, it's going to grow. I mean, our, I know our folks around here are using others right now. I get that. But I, but it, it's just that whole piece about, um, uh, you know, is the need that strong here or is it just the whole metro area that, that we're taking care of? That that's, that's part I always, I hear different things on that. And that's, that's the only thing. And, and that's just.
I think it's.
My two cents.
It's good two cents. I think the Carver County, the work that they did in the housing need, uh, specifically with our seniors features. I, but that building's actually too small for us. So, um, just the need within the county is, is a stunning number. And, and our ability to build it, we're not, we can't build it fast enough. So that's why I love the empties. As a program, we love the empties. We could do it in a lot shorter time and we could do it for about a fifth of the price right now per room. And the impact has that big impact. So, um, I use that study as kind of mine. And that's just Carver County. So, but I think the point's a, a fair point.
I like to focus on seniors and active seniors and, um, families. I think that's like a, it's hard to do everything, but you know, that sounds like a nice way to really, like something the community needs to me. You know what I mean? I think that's like a huge thing that's overlooked. And certainly as our population continues to age, there's just going to be more of that need. And so, um, I really appreciate that focus because I think it is kind of a missing link in some of it. It's really easy to house one person. And I shouldn't say it's easy. You know what I mean? It's a little bit easier to house one person, but when you have a family of four that has a housing need, that's harder.
Yep.
And so, um, I thought that, that stood out to me when I watched your video earlier today. I was like, wow, that's really impactful.
And we've been blessed. We've been shown the gap. So.
Yeah.
Whether it's our family or a neighbor, we, you can see it.
Yeah, Mayor, I think the interesting thing in your comment that resonated with me a little bit though is the focus on seniors and families, right? Those are groups of people who choose to want to stay in the community that they want to stay in, right? Like they lived here, they had a house in Chaska. They just can't continue to afford that house payment as an example, right? And, 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 but they don't want to leave their community that they've grown up in and lived in, right? So I think that's, you know, to that, where are they coming from type thing? Like that's an interesting model, right? Because I think you see that a lot, right? Like we don't want to leave the neighborhood, the community that I've lived in here for 30 years, but I don't have a place that I can afford to live in the city, right?
But it's not permanent house.
It wouldn't be for, for either of the groups who we're focused on, but the seniors would have obviously a longer, much longer lease than.
Okay. So, so someone could stay there longer.
Yeah. And that's, that'll be good for all of us, really.
No, but the, the way Oak Ridge is set up, families would be a challenge, correct?
I think families, it'll be, um, if you looked at the way they have, they have a short wing of rooms and they have a longer wing of rooms. That longer wing of rooms, um, better for the designers to speak and the architects to speak, but I'll do my best. Um, you look at maybe a blue floor, a purple floor, a green floor as an example, and using a little bit of what, um, some other groups have done. He'd be, the family would be on the green floor. And so you'd have a, a beautiful entrance. You would know you're on the green, green floor based on, um, nice little tag or your lanyard that you had, uh, wearing with you. And you probably wouldn't be on the purple floor unless you're visiting friends. So that would help. You're almost going to run two or three little communities within the community.
And there's rooms in there that are like executives, like the executive suites, they're bigger, which would work better for families than like some of the other rooms. I don't know if that's what you were getting to, but.
I didn't know there was ever.
I didn't either till I watched this video. I literally liked it a lot in 10 minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Glad that worked. Yeah, I, I think your, your point of aging within our community and having an option that's less than, we, we couldn't find a place less than our mortgage after we sold our home in Victoria and we didn't have anywhere to go. So I think that's a, it's a really good point. And our seniors are in that, uh, typically on that fixed income with everything increasing. So I, uh, what I've seen to date is it's, it'll be a huge blessing. So, but it, it'll take some effort. It'll take some work. I, uh, what I've seen to date is it's, it'll be a huge blessing, so, but it, it'll take some effort, it'll take some work. It'll take some uh horsepower and pros, we're, we're excited to be here and, and walk alongside.
Slight dumb question, but I'm assuming you, you work with different agencies to help like move them into the next.
Yes.
Housing and kind of that sort of piece of things, so that they, they can transition on to the next step.
Yes, thank you, about sixty-seven percent of our current residents move on to a, that next step, which is great. That's the benchmark, which I would suggest is still a failure, cause sixty-seven still. Our teachers aren't here, but we're, we're not there yet, but it's better than where we are. And that's our focus is what happens after, so our success is determined by where that resident goes after, after they finished. Thank you, that, that's a standing invite then to come, um, we are cooking, uh preparing meals every day as well, so if you want to come for a meal, please. Feel free to do so as well.
Mondays, when you cut onions, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of onions being cut, a lot of chopping being done on Mondays, zucchini was today. Boodles of zucchini, so thank you. Alright, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you, and you?
Ask if there's anyone else, but there's no one else here, so we'll go ahead and say we're done with visitor presentation.
I think you should ask if Mr. Collin wants to speak.
You want to speak?
No, I do not.
Think I got my answer pretty quick. Are you here with Greg?
I'm just here to mail him forward.
Come on up here then, get up here by this microphone. Tell me why a young man would come to a council meeting.
Must be a city manager.
Excuse me, what? Isn't there something else you want to get into? Jeep farting or anything?
No, I'm a college student studying political science, so I just want to learn more about the community and just want to see what it's like, like these city council meetings would look like.
That's awesome, where are you going to school at?
Uh, MSU Mankato.
You should have come to one that's like super long though, I really.
Yeah, they're all like.
This one's pretty easy, man, you got off the hook.
So, what is mom, his mom, Josie Collin used to be on the school board, and uh. And uh, uh, you just graduated last year, so.
From Chaska or Chad?
At Chanhassen High School.
I'm a poly sci major, guys, I was a poly sci major as well.
Me too.
Super fun, don't know.
Why don't you guys just high five?
But, but I was also a double major in business, and that's what I went into, actually, so.
Where, where do you high five at?
Political science major. Had to write a really long paper and pass, and it was all good, close to, you know, close to Mankato, just up the hill at Gustavus, but. All good stuff, yeah. All fun stuff, just enjoy, my, I think my hardest class that I ever took in political science was. Modern political thought, which modern makes you think it's modern, but it ain't modern. But, yeah, but it's better than ancient thought, right, so, good luck with those, those were not fun courses.
Understood, thank you.
So do you have any questions for us, or you want to get how, how we can really get you through this college or anything like that, I would have turned you over to these guys, not me.
No, it's like, I'm just here to take in the information, just listen, see what the environment is, and it's also a love to look. See if there's any opportunities in government over like summer twenty twenty-five, just want to get involved in local politics and see what's happening.
He's gonna shadow me during winter break.
I was just gonna say, are you gonna shadow Matt?
Uh, so are you entering your second year of school, or?
Uh, yes, I'm entering, interning for summer twenty twenty-five, I'm looking to, so I'm also majoring in accounting, so I'm a. A major in political science, accounting, and minor in business law, so I'm looking to do an internship in accounting. Through like a private or public firm, but I also love to see any opportunities, there'll be more of like a part-time association with. Like Chaska government or any other government, any other local governments.
Well, I will say that, um, if you don't end up in a profession that's political science or government related. Um, there's still ways to serve, right, like that, that was my path, right, I actually wanted to be a lawyer, that's what I originally wanted to go. Actually, I originally wanted to be a teacher, not to make this about me now, but, and then wanted to be a lawyer, and then. Ended up in human resources, I know. But then, like I said, following away, like I still had that passion for community and government, and, you know, started, you know, uh. Look at board opportunities, I know with college that might be a little di- more difficulty, but. You know, cities are like that, so wish you the best of luck, cause it's, yeah, we, I will just say, there's not enough young individuals that. Want to get involved with politics and government, cause.
Usually pretty jaded about it.
Correct.
But I'm good to be optimistic, say, how can I be a part of this to make, you know, real change happen, so.
And local government impacts you the most, I just always smile, cause everything, all the attentions at the big, the big ugly stuff, that's all the news, but. Your day-to-day life is more impacted than what happens through here.
I always remember what his uncle said. Ninety-five percent of my life is spent in my community, wouldn't I want to spend. You know, my time and my energy and my money to make it the best place I can make it.
We get to do more cool things here at this local level than your senators and your representatives do, because. They gotta fight four hundred other ones to get it, we're, we're five, and the good thing is, is we all get along, cause we don't. We don't have a party that we're battling with, we are representatives of the city. And that's what we do, our job is to look out what's best for the city, and so.
I think too, you're not siloed either, you know, you have to be, you have to work as a collective whole in order to make things happen. And that means you have to listen to everybody's opinions and come to a, you know, a strategic vision collectively.
Like tonight, I said, wear blue tonight, almost everyone got the memo, but what? I don't know what happened.
Someone has to shine here.
But it happens sometimes, you know, you just don't get it, but, thank you, thanks for coming, and thanks for coming up and sharing.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night. Alright, now I know there's nobody else to speak. Alright, uh, next we're gonna move on to item six, proving previous meeting minutes, and that's from seven fifteen twenty twenty-four. Uh, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by uh Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard, uh, again, proving previous min- meeting minutes from seven fifteen twenty twenty-four discussion. Hearing none, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries, alright, moves us to consent item, these are items that, um. Need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation, but any and all can be talked about, uh, if necessary, so with that. Uh, anyone have a comment, concern, question on consent?
I just have one comment, I feel like we miss this sometimes, and I just wanna, I was looking at the list of gifts, um, and donations and. Thinking about what they were used for, and I, sometimes I look at the list and then don't say thank you, so I thought, today we have a light agenda, so. Thought I'd say thank you and acknowledge.
I had the same thought, exactly, I was just like. We don't really say thank you to the people that are leaving us donations.
Yeah, but this is a big list, and like I said, I was thinking about all the things, these did summer concerts, lodge event for the seniors and. Um, touch a truck, like, there's so many on here, the police department, bride celebration, and just how incredible that is, so. Thought we should take a minute to come and say thank you to all those organizations that are donating, that's. Those are big dollars that, um, they're putting back into the community, so.
I, that is something that's great to mention, that the enrichment in the community piece.
That's all I had on that.
Oh, I better not say nothing, I'll just let things go. So, this, this joint powers, now that's to get the, the trail connection.
Yeah, so it's ultimately, it's a regional trail, and so we need to have a joint powers agreement with Carver County to. To actually make that for regional trail, once we have that in place, then we can actually go up for bid for. Uh, for the, the trail and then start construction.
Okay, so, so this will be going probably soon now after we get this done.
Yep.
Well, that's one of those. Um, big steps forward, so. That'll be nice to get that done, that will end that, you know, why did you build a tunnel with nowhere to go, so that'll be nice to. To uh, get that out of the way. And I'm not, not gonna say nothing, um, with that, uh.
Alright, I made a motion to. To adopt, wait.
Prove consent agenda.
Consent agenda, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at something specific here.
Alright, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard. Oh, I'll give it the second to Councilmember Gra. Um, discussion. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries. Alright, moves us to action items, we have none, short meeting tonight. Alright, next we have bills, uh, anyone have any comments regarding a bill?
I'll just make a quick comment, the, you had a question on the candy, uh, that is a tandem.
That is a tandem, cause that's a, that was a lot of money for a normal dump truck, so I figured it must have been. When, does it say when we take delivery to that, or do we already have it?
You didn't ask me that question.
Alright, anyone else have a question on bills? Motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard, pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, at least we call roll.
For Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Aye.
You're in.
Aye. Alright, moves to other business, uh, Councilmember Gra.
No, really, though, I, I already, I'll just mention, I talked to my clerk afterwards, uh, before, but I'll just mention, in case he was listening, so they don't do the same thing I did. They put the final overlay on the new housing development just to the west of my, of Founder's Ridge. Kind of that DR Horton, right?
River Town Heights.
Yes, River Town Heights, thank you. Um, which also means they also paved the new path all the way down to all the new, the new developments further down there, which is kind of. Curiosity minds, they're like, oh, look, I can drive down there, um, but I asked my expert to talk with the contractor, cause. It abruptly comes to an end with a huge drop off, and there's nothing there, like, I'm driving along, and I'm like, oh, I stopped, and like, the road like. Ends, so there probably needs to be like a dead end.
Nothing there.
No, like, it kind of looks like it goes in a circle, and the circles aren't connected. And then it's fairly like drop off, and it was just very, I mean, it was tonight, I had my kids, to be honest, and. You know, you're kind of doing this, and it's starting to rain, and all of a sudden, you're like, cause you're kind of coming up, and you're like, oh, I can't go that way. So I backed up and went, but yeah, so Matt was gonna take it, but I'll mention for anyone listening, particularly in my neighborhood, because again, you're just curious now, cause it's like. Oh, look, it's fully paved, cause far as all gravel, right? Um, but yeah, it was, it looks, it, and the positive is, it's really exciting actually to drive back there. And kind of just see that space, cause.
Especially the woods.
Yeah, I mean, it goes right, yeah, and that's kind of where the drop off is, you, you're looking at the woods.
I'm very curious.
Yeah, so, well, don't go to.
They've had that all along there, if you, early on, if you had drove on the gravel. There was a.
But less people drive on gravel than this nice beautiful pit blacktop.
Always travel the gravel.
I don't know, that's a good saying, um, but it's dark there now, so don't go there now, there's no street lights yet either, so, um. So I thought that was exciting, it's just exciting to kind of see that space. Um, you know, I, I always appreciate, I'll take the time to say it this way, I appreciate. River City Days. Uh, you know, I know there's some, uh, there's a comment on one of the uh, social media sites, I'm like, why does the city have two events so close together? Um, actually, the River City Day representative who runs their Facebook page. Commented about how actually that's independently run from the city, so he's helped, obviously, we're very supportive of it. I think that's a good reminder, cause like, I grew up in a smaller town where we had yesterdays. Uh, and that was a city celebration, so it's just kind of interest in parade. So it's, I just, again, thanks to all the people who volunteer to put their time and effort into River City Days. For many, many people, they just show up and take it for granted, all that work that goes into it, so I want to make sure to say thank you. Um, I enjoy walking in the parade and just seeing friends, and I also just like, enjoy the opportunities that sometimes. Um, it allows, like, you know, it was a highlight of, uh, things that like, oh, I gotta walk, and it's really hot, but my youngest, like. Couldn't stop talking about throwing candy out to, to people, right, like, it's just like those fun examples where. You know, you, you're looking at like, this, it's really warm here, and, and, and we're gonna walk, and he's just like. Beat red face running, but it was like the best time of his life, so, uh, again, appreciate the fun and the group, I think we had a good, some good selfies there as well. Um, so, but yeah, I just again, want to thank everyone who helps organize that. Uh, it was a very busy weekend for me, but I was glad to be able to participate in the parade. And that is all I have, man, thank you.
Councilmember Hubbard.
I'll just a couple things. One, I read in the newsletter for the community center that the community center will be closed. Monday, August twenty-sixth through Monday, September second, they will be installing new weight equipment. And flooring along with other maintenance of high usage area, it sounds like. They're gonna have a modified group fitness schedule, um, and the classes will be held outdoors if the weather is nice on the. Old splash pad, so I just figured that was something kind of huge and worth mentioning at a meeting, just because I know we have a lot of users. Of the community center, um, some other upcoming things, tomorrow is nineteen night, um, so if your neighborhood has a party. Get out and hang out with your neighbors. Uh, let's see, Highway five between Victoria. Uh, and Chanhassen, kind of right that intersection by the Apple House, but like Bavaria or rolling.
Rolling acres.
And then, um, Highway five is gonna be closed for about a week, um. It will close at six AM on Monday, August twelfth, until ten PM on Sunday, August eighteenth, it's going to be brutal. But it's necessary for them to do their, uh, soil testing for the highway project. Uh, for next year.
Is that what they're closing for?
Yeah, it says necessary to gather soil samples under and around the highway. To inform on how the new road will be designed and how suitable the soil is for construction, or the fall. They said that, so, because I've, I've had a discussion with the county, I'm, they said that it was either close it for a week and do it like this. Or have it flagged and have it close, like, have it flagged for like three weeks. Which sounded even more painful, so, just was what it was. But you can still get into the arboretum, you just can't go any farther past that if you're going westbound. And, um, if you go to the county website, they have the detour route posted, you know, it's like Highway seven, so. I don't know, those are. I guess my tips, other than, yeah, River City Days was great, um, the committee that does all the hard work to put that on, did a fabulous job. And the weather was, it was hot, but it's July, it's always supposed to be that way, but the weather was perfect and the parade was so great. Um, and, uh, they, I mean, they keep building on it in that spot, I think it's like a great space for them to grow. And so, my hat's off to them on all the, and the hard work of all, you know, the things that the city did, like the police, I know they, you guys. Spent time out there and all the work doing, you know, public works to get it ready and everything, there were a lot of people involved in making that happen, so. Thanks to all, that's it.
You.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yeah, um, River City Days, everything everyone else just said, but also a big thank you Southwest Transit, I'm. So grateful that we're part of that joint powers agreement to have.
Do you know how many they transported, did they take?
So, Friday night, Dorothy said it was like seventy-eight or something, I didn't get the Saturday numbers yet. But I think it was a lot, I mean, she, when I got back on to go back to my car, it was. A group of probably fifteen got off, so, um. It's nice to have the trolley, and to ha- it was nice to be in air conditioning, um, not have to deal with parking, I tried to deal with parking. And I was like, nope, and went and just, it was nice to be able to get a nice air-conditioned trolley, take it down and, um. Now I probably won't want to go to River City Days any other way, cause it was just so convenient, um, so big thanks to Southwest Transit and the staff there that. Is very intentional about being involved in community events, um, across the communities, so, uh, and appreciate that, so. Um, and then, I think it was since the last meeting that the tunnel opened. Um, and then I think it was since the last meeting that the tunnel opened, right? That was since then, it was a wet rainy day like today, but um it was fun to see some people come out on bikes and to walk it, and some people just rode through the tunnel over and over, I just thought it was fun, it was just nice to get to see people move through it, um. And just very excited that that's open, are we still planning on railing sometime this month, maybe?
Yes.
Yes, that's gonna be even more exciting.
We got, I've been told we have to get a picture of you now.
Oh yes, and John and I are gonna go shake hands in the middle of the tunnel.
Is that like the, is that like the twins logo?
Yeah, Minnie and Polly.
We, yeah.
There's, there's, it switches right underneath the.
Well, it's at forty-one, so we decided we'll just shake hands under the tunnel. Um, what else?
Just not much gets by you guys.
Uh. Few events coming up, cop, cop on a rooftop at Dunkin' Donuts is Friday, August sixteenth, six AM. Last year, the cop was not on the roof. So we'll see if they get on the roof this time, or if it's probably not that safe to do, but you can go donate um to Special Olympics in Minnesota and usually get like a free donut or coffee or something, so it's just kind of fun to go out early and uh and donate to a good cause. And then Touch a Truck is on the twenty-second at five PM in its new location at the Chaska High School.
That's exciting.
So that'll be a nice big space for that event.
Touch on that a minute?
Yeah.
I think it's, this is just a one time.
Yeah.
Because of the construction going on at the middle school, so I just wanna.
That's a good point.
It's confusing to people, we, we're, we keep bouncing and, but just know that I, as far as I know, it's a one time.
Don't you think it would not be a one time if we're, due to our work session previous?
I don't know.
Because of Highway ten next, next summer, no?
Well, I, see, I, that's a good point, I don't know.
Oh, so maybe a couple of years, but, but this year it's at the high school.
You didn't get there, you just gotta come up bridge.
Oh man, okay.
Neighbor.
Appreciate that.
Oh.
I'm afraid of that.
Anyways, um the farmer's markets are still happening on Wednesdays, I went down last week and um which was also bark in the park.
Yeah, I was down there too.
That was two weeks ago, wasn't it?
Oh, two weeks ago, maybe.
Cuz it got rained out last week.
Oh, that's right, yeah, so two weeks ago.
It was a rain.
Um. It was very hot that day, so Hazel and I didn't stay long, but she did get several pop cups and was very excited about that. Um. But farmer's markets are still going on, so nice to head down to those on Wednesdays um and shop those smaller vendors and food trucks and things, so. And then my last thing is just Carver County Fairs this weekend.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So that's always a fun event to go to. The seventh through the eleventh. So it starts Thursday.
No, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Well, it's Wednesday?
Yep.
Yeah, we got old county boy here.
Johnny Holmes is always Wednesday, right?
Wednesday night.
Yep. Yep, exactly.
And that's everything I had.
You're done, Elise.
I have nothing.
Oh yeah. Wow. Mr. Mike.
Nothing, your honor.
Matt.
A couple things, uh first of all, uh just a little preview for the next council meeting, we are gonna have uh oh, Peter Leatherman, his name was slipping my mind, he's gonna be here to give us our results on our survey. And uh Elise and I had a chance to meet with Peter today and go over those results, it was a very good survey. Uh so I think you guys are gonna like the the results of it and and uh I just say, it was very, uh it was nice to see. Uh so uh we will have him give, uh ends up being about a forty-five minute presentation. Uh going through, we asked a hundred and yeah, a hundred and sixty questions, and so there's a lot of stuff to go through.
Hundred and six, that's so many questions.
Yeah, but, but people, people enthusiastically take this survey, he tells us that every time.
So is it gonna be a work session in the meeting, sorry?
No, we're gonna have it in the meeting, cuz uh uh, well, first of all, we have a work session with a budget, but second of all um I, I think it's really, I think it's important to get this information out and we can use this as a way to then just start pushing some of the information on the uh survey results out to people too, so.
Do you know if he touches on, um cuz one question I saw around the survey was why is it only so many residents, why is it only done, you know, via phone or whatever, does he touch on that when he gives?
Absolutely, because one of the things, and it's one of the reasons that most cities in the Twin Cities utilize them is, well, there's two reasons. First of all, because it's statistically sound, and and so there's a the way they conduct the survey and how they do it makes it so that they can make it uh plus or minus five percentage points as far as uh statistic, you know, statistical soundness, they're a second reason is because there's very similar questions that are asked from city to city and so gives them an opportunity to show us, how do we compare to other communities that are out there too, so. I don't know, it's, it's always one of my favorite uh meetings, cuz it's just a real good opportunity to see uh what are the things that are important to our residents, and then how do we compare to other uh communities as well. Uh and then second thing is, and I can't remember if I saw everybody got an email on this or not, but uh we did receive the second grant for the Big Woods, uh which uh uh is uh great to be able to to say that we got both of the funding uh for that, so we'll be able to uh with that grant preserve uh you know, the major portions of the significant Big Woods there, so that's uh to me pretty exciting to to see that uh
Mm-hmm.
See that preserve, so a big uh shout out to Ashley, uh who uh was sort of leading up that along with a team of of other staff to put that together and um we had to do a video interview. And I could tell you one person that we probably maybe may lost the grant on was uh was the mayor here because uh his head.
It wasn't my fault.
We had him in front of.
Toby, we're in a green screen.
We had him on a green screen, it looked like his head was like floating around the screen.
I didn't know that that was green screen, they never told us, why didn't she tell me to shift, then finally she's going. Well, okay.
Is there, or this is recorded?
I, I gotta point it.
Not recorded.
I hope it is, cuz it's hilarious.
And then that's when the fox jumped on the screen.
Yeah.
The fox jumped on the screen.
It's like this cartoon, a cartoon fox jumped on the screen when his head was popping in and out, it was it was crazy.
What are you laughing about out there?
Despite all that, we got the grant.
Five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, it's a significant grant.
Yes, I saw how.
But it's almost a million dollars between the two, so.
Developers parkland dedication dollars, or was that still a component?
So we, we, so uh we sort of figured out how did that work, we wanted to preserve uh parkland dollars for development of the park, and so uh we used the grant to be able to preserve all that area so that we could preserve those dollars for actually developing the park. Uh so it gave us sort of the the best of both worlds. So. That's it.
Alright, a few things, I wanted to touch on River City Days as well, uh you know, it's really expanding uh down in the park, but they seem to really enjoy the excess room that we have down there, so uh congratulations to the River City Days planning group for planning such a a great event. I would like to touch that the St. Paul Winter Carnival was in our parade this year. Uh so there was a little local connection there, Kevin Westerhouse with the Lions, his wife is the queen. So that brought them here and it was kind of fun, they were all going down to uh Lions Park after, and so I went down there afterwards and they, they were all there, King Boreas and the East Wind and the West Wind, I don't even know that they they, they were given challenge coins out and crowns, I got, I got the queen's crown. So that's pretty cool, I got that on my hat, uh but it, that, they may really seem to have a lot of fun, they went back, they went and changed out of their uh out of their uniforms and came back to the park and and were eating and having a good time, so fun times. Stop it about the crowd, I'll share it with you, I know you want it. Uh Carver County Fair, I was gonna touch, but you already got that, uh state fair is just around the corner. Um Southwest Transit will be running bus service, the best way to go to the state fair ever is to hop on the bus and uh we can get that right here, right?
Yep.
We don't have to go to.
And they expanded the days this year.
Yep, they extended the days though, either that or Labor Day, um you could take it from Carver, Chaska Chan, Eden Prairie, all four. Um and you, it's one fair for both fairs, one fair for one, whatever, you can go Ren Fest and um the state fair, all for six dollars.
Oh, they run to the Renaissance?
Yep, this year is our first year we're going to the Ren Fest.
Oh, I didn't know that.
The first year in.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Good to know. Alright, um. We just, we had a work session tonight about the rebuild of kind of Route ten, there's gonna be a lot more coming up on that, um. There, and just real briefly, uh it had been a multi-year project and they're gonna probably turn it into a one-year project. So uh they went over all logistics on on how they plan to do that and um uh it's gonna be a year of HE double toothpicks uh on kind of Route ten, but uh when it's done, it'll be really nice, the, the nice part about it is, is the part of the safe routes to school, uh we got some money for that. Boy, it's three years already, isn't it? It's been a number of years ago that, that there'll be a tunnel, so now the uh anybody walking to school will not have to cross over forty-one which is a scary road to cross over, cuz it's so big and so wide. So uh that'll be great to see that, uh it's just gonna help our trail system out by by getting those done, so that I I think is an exciting piece of that along with just the overall traffic movement of of everything, so but that will be a that'll be a challenging project. And that, so that's slated for twenty twenty-five. Um, public safety, are we getting caught back up, Matt? Kind of not really?
Well, it's gonna take a while to get caught back up, yeah.
And we get rain again today, but at least.
Yeah. No, it's, we're still behind.
Okay. I, it's just, uh there's, uh the footings are in, uh walls coming out of the ground, but they're not, you know, next phase will be the exterior walls, um.
And I think they thought the middle of August for the first walls that will be visible coming out of the uh ground.
Are they, is that spec?
That portion is, uh so it's just the apparatus.
Just the apparatus, yeah. Okay, so uh there's always something um new and exciting going on there every week, so. Uh somebody mentioned nineteen night is tomorrow, supposed to be a uh a great night, I think they're saying seventy-seven and sunny, so that'll be awesome. Um, I don't know if, is it, is it too late, does anybody know too late to still register? If you're gonna have a block party?
Yeah, I think it was a couple of weeks ago that the deadline was.
So um doesn't mean you can't still have a party, it just doesn't mean that you're officially registered and where uh different groups stop by and and fire trucks can stop by, police cars and different staffs couldn't stop by, but you can still have your block party if you, if it kind of got away on you and that's all of a sudden here and didn't realize it, don't be afraid to still have it, so. Uh grand for Big Woods, we got uh the US Amateur Golf Tournament, it's right around the corner. Uh starts.
Saturdays.
This Saturday.
Practice rounds are Saturday, Sunday. Monday, Tuesday is both courses, Hazeltine and town course. Wednesday is sort of their day in case it rains or if they have any ties or things do. And then uh they go down to a field of sixty-four for Thursday and then they cut it down to like thirty-two on Friday and down further on Saturday and.
Oh, that's how they do that?
Yeah, so it goes down to just one pair uh playing on Sunday.
Oh, interesting, interesting. And um you can go to the town course for free, so if you want to go watch golf, you can go there. Uh Hazeltine is a required ticket. And I assume they're available, they.
Yeah.
But I don't know why they've stopped.
Thirty bucks.
What's that?
Thirty bucks.
Thirty bucks, okay, good. Um so anyways, uh some of the best US uh amateur golfers in in around uh that's where the likes of Tiger Woods came out of, um.
John Daly's son will be.
John Daly's son will be in it, Tiger's son just missed the cut. They said if Tiger's son would have been in there, it would have been quite the uh tournament, so. Uh but anyways, that is, what did we say the dates are, this, so it starts this Saturday.
Yeah.
Saturday, and then it really goes to the following Sunday, so. Another thing, uh uh I'm trying to think, it's, it's not application, is it application for city council, is that the right word, no?
Uh filing.
Filing for city council, uh open last Tuesday, and it goes till the, a week from tomorrow. Am I correct on that?
Yep.
Okay. We, uh so uh this year, who's up for elections, award two and four, correct?
Yes.
Two and four, and then the mayor's uh slot is up for um elections this year, so if you're interested in uh filing, make sure that you do it, uh you have to come down and meet with Denise right here at city hall, and again, that's for uh eight more day, eight more days, and then uh that will close. I, I think that closes, isn't that the day of the primary? It closes on the day of the primary, so, alright. Uh the other thing is, is this Thursday, the uh and I know it's really not here, but it is we were still a big part of it, I believe, uh the Highway two twelve groundbreaking for the westerly part of that from Cologne and Norwood is um next Thursday, at like one o'clock-ish. Um out in, up by Bungards actually is where it's at, so that'll be exciting to see that next phase done and really that'll change how the travel, cuz now it'll be four lane for quite a ways to the west and all the way into cities now, so. Um, big segment, I I assume that'll be the same thing, probably a two, this fall, or they'll do a lot of dirt moving and then next year they'll whatever, I don't know if they'll get it done the following year or not, I haven't heard really the time schedule on that one, so. Um, I better not say anything else. Just leave it at that, last call. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. You adjourned, we'll see you.